Good morning, everybody. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda that's presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we've got a citizen to be heard. Is anybody out in the audience who wants to speak to the consul? Anybody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, we go to the approval of the payment of bills or vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved in minutes from April 26th.
Move approval. Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
April 25th, excuse me. Okay, the first thing, or next thing, is the presentation of the MCIT report for 2023. I guess I didn't get your name, so if you want to introduce yourself, please.
All right, we'll do it. All right, well, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for the time on your, on the agenda here this morning. My name is Tom Supis. I am the MCIT Risk Management Consultant with the pleasure of working with Clay County. Again, we typically provide this report to the MCIT or the county boards really every other year, except unfortunately, due to COVID, we canceled 2021, and so here we are. So it's been four years since we've had an opportunity to be in front of you. So we welcome that. With that, again, we typically do this to kind of coincide with the election. So we've actually missed two elections here. So with that, I want to special welcome to Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Kravenhoff. So welcome. Well, respecting your time, I'm already just going to touch on just a few of the highlights here of our report. Now, as you may already know, MCIT, we're not a, we're actually a joint powers public entity risk-sharing pool. We're not an insurance company. So again, as a result, we try to be responsive to our county members' service needs and coverage needs. So we try to continue to adjust our, our coverage to, to your needs. Just a little history, remember back in the 70s, coverage was getting very difficult to find, especially workers' compensation, and primarily for law enforcement. They just weren't, weren't touching that. It was getting quite expensive. So late in the 70s, actually in 1979, is when the counties decided, well, why don't we just fund and pool our resources and fund the, our own workers' compensation? So you did. It was so successful that in, in really 1980 is when we, we then added the property, the casualty or liability coverage, as well as the auto coverage as well. And Clay County has been with MCIT since 1980, so we thank you for that. Now, again, 44 years later, we actually have 81 now of the 87 counties in the trust, all but the six large self-funded counties of Anoka and Dakota, Hennepin and Ramsey, St. Louis County, and Olmsted Counties are the six counties that are not in the trust. We also have over 390 public entities affiliated with our counties, such as your soil and water conservation districts, historical societies, joint powers entities, as well as lake improvement districts, economic development authorities, housing redevelopment authorities. So again, all public entities, all really affiliated with our, our counties. Now, we feel like really that success has been kind of built on MCIT's responsive to your needs. However, it's really, I think, the, we believe the members' willingness really to support our prevention and risk management strategies, reducing the, the cost of claims and the frequency of claims, as well as, again, just our members' commitment to the MCIT programs and services. So we thank you for that. So turning to the second, well, before we turn, this really all kind of comes back to the MCIT mission of providing Minnesota counties and associated members cost-effective coverage with comprehensive and quality risk management services. So on to the second page. Let's talk about cyber a little bit. Again, we learned middle of 2022 that our cyber carrier, Hartford Steam Boiler, was not going to renew our cyber coverage for all of our MCIT members. So staff went to work to find another carrier for cyber, actually found a better carrier, one through Counties Reinsurance Limited that actually handles our liability reinsurance as well. They will provide, and again, are providing that, that cyber coverage without, actually enhanced coverage up to now $500,000 per aggregate limit. So increased limits, increased sublimits, some increased per claim limits, so there's actually more coverage, no additional contribution costs for our counties and our members, as well as no other individual underwriting obligations. So a success on the cyber coverage. Moving on to the dividend, everybody likes to talk about the dividends, but the 2022 dividend only applied to the workers' compensation division. The, actuarially, the board decided on their recommendation to return $7 million in total dividend, and you can see the Clay County's share listed there as well of $127,849. Now, moving on to kind of the, the blue box, before I move on, let me just mention on the dividends. It's important to remember, again, that dividends look to the past. They reflect MCIT's past claim experience, and then also the performance of our MCIT investments, which are similar to what the county can invest in. And again, as important as written there, that MCIT, we only can issue a dividend when it's actuarially sound and fiscally prudent. And again, but although MCIT has returned a dividend every year since the beginning of MCIT. Now we'll move on to rates. We're kind of in the, in the blue box here. Our MCIT rates are actuarially derived as well. The rates look forward, and it looks at members' exposures for the upcoming year, as well as the total claims cost that could be as a part of that, as well as MCIT's operations cost. Now, membership in a risk-sharing pool like we have, we feel is, it's the similarity of exposures. The economies of scale, as well as, again, the like kind can provide rate stability. So again, that is one of our goals, as well as to help, you know, smooth out some of the peaks and valleys of some of the larger catastrophic claims, and allows our members really to budget for next year's coverage costs. Moving on to the next page. So on the top here, it's the aggregate work comp claims by the top three departments. So this is MCIT as a whole, not just Clay County, but all of MCIT, looking at the years of 2018 to 2022. So the three departments with the highest claim activity in both frequency, which is the number of claims, as well as the severity, the, the cost of those claims. Now, sheriff and jail operations lead in both frequency and severity, followed by highway, as well as a hospital and nursing homes. So again, it's not too surprising, these are all 24/7 operations, and some of those jobs can be hazardous. Now, moving on to the right-hand column, the yellow column talking about the workers' compensation claims affect, affect the county's contribution. So again, this describes the experience modification factor, or a mod factor for work comp. Now, work comp is experience rated, so the number of frequency of claims and the severity of claims can impact then the cost, contribution cost for workers' compensation. Now, if you consider about 1.0 being neutral, or the base cost, if the mod is over 1.0, then it'd be paying more than the base cost. If it's under 1.0, then you'd be paying less than the base cost. Now, you can see for Clay County for 2023, your mod is 0.824, which is an excellent mod. That creates savings for Clay County in the tune of $83,673. So we applaud that. And again, you know, the, the mod is calculated with the three previous years excluding the most recent year. So for example, 2019, 2020, and 2021 are the three years that make up that 2023 mod. So you're looking at, you know, the mods, have they been decreasing over time? And so again, MCIT applauds the county's effort, because it really, it takes the county's effort really to get there, including, you know, support from, from the Commissioners as well. So we, we thank you. We encourage you to continue that work with the Safety Committee, a strong return to work program, again, to try to continue to, to increase those savings for Clay County. Now, MCIT's Loss Control Consultant, Nick Lindberg, is also available to help, to kind of maybe to help, you know, identify any specific loss areas that you may want to address. So the next area is the aggregate property casualty claims. So again, casualty is just the liability claims. Again, same time for you, 2018 to 2022, MCIT as a whole, again. And again, remember, MCIT, we actually do not experience rate property, liability claims, and auto claims. Only workers' compensation is experience rated, so all kind of pay the same based upon their exposures. So you can see, again, frequency and severity, auto has led in both, and it has really for many, many years. That's why you see we have a lot of loss control services for auto. We want every auto, every person to get through their day. And so again, the claim activity in both frequency and severity, not too surprising, we have about 11,500 vehicles throughout the trust. So quite a few vehicles. Next is property, which again, not too surprising, we have about $7.6 billion in property. So the property costs, and then followed by general liability on the frequency side, and then law enforcement liability is on the severity side. All right? Moving on to the last page, so let's talk, we'll kind of move on from coverage and just talk about some of the services that MCIT tries to provide, again, to try to help our counties and our members. First one is, is consultation. So I remember, I, I mentioned Nick, Nick Lindberg is the Loss Control Consultant. I have the privilege as the Risk Management Consultant to work with Clay County. Again, any questions you might have about coverage, or liability, or, or, you know, just in, in, in your consideration. So here's an example, I was just working with a local county and the Agricultural Society. Again, trying to help the Agricultural Society and the county. Oftentimes, the county owns the buildings and the land. Agricultural Society has some of the contents, as well as the property in the open, want to make sure that everything is covered, so that the Agricultural Society, all those livestock pens, those gates, those lights, all of that is covered, and that the county is protected, if, if any of those. So there's an example there. So again, to make sure, we want everything covered. We don't want our members to ever hear, I am really sorry, that is not scheduled, it, it is not covered. Don't want to hear that. Don't want to, we don't want to send that message. So again, a little bit about consultation. We're here to help prevent losses, maximize coverage. Going to training, we try to offer a wealth of training, either in-person training, we've been doing a lot of virtual training recently, as well as also a lot of hybrid trainings as well. We record a lot of those. So those are all on our website at mcit.org. We have a number of webinars. We have a lot of coverage reviews explaining coverage, a lot of risk management and workers' compensation workshops, again, to try to get that information at your fingertips. Minnesota Government Data Practices Act is a very popular program, so we have a number of those. Building a Positive Safety Culture, Navigating Land Use Decisions is a, is a popular one for our Commissioners, as well as we just recently had a hybrid cybersecurity for our county attorneys. Again, just to try to get everybody, cyber is really just on the radar for, for a lot of us. Some of the other awareness and prevention materials, and we are proud to say many are award-winning, and so we're, we want to create these materials for our members. Some of the ones listed here, again, the Essentials of Data Security for Public Entities. A great really booklet with a number of chapters, with a bunch of areas in there, again, to try to help the county build protections around data security. You know, the coverage is only part of it, and that's after the fact. The key is really try to prevent losses. Also, we have the self, the Cybersecurity Self-Assessment Checklist. Again, just a way to kind of look through, where are the strengths? Where are the opportunities to improve? And we strongly encourage, again, to really re, you know, truly revisit that. Hopefully, that will help the county get better aligned with some of the cyber best practices. So we encourage that highly. Some of the others, step wisely, slip and fall programs, we try to, again, prevent those. That really drives a lot of the general liability claims. There's a lot of slip, fall. So again, constantly trying to reduce those, as well as other best practices guides. Some of other service providers that are partners with MCIT. For example, the Employee Assistance Program with Sand Creek, that's professional counseling. The Minnesota Safety Council, all members of MCIT are members of the Minnesota Safety Council. And again, one of their programs is a defensive driving program, and it's a good one. It's either online for 20 minutes, just a great little refresher, or you can invite them out for a, a two-hour training program taught by an ex-trouper, an excellent program. So we, again, all of this is, is included with coverage. Some of the others, Hartford Steam Boiler, they provide those boiler inspections and pressure vessel inspections, again, to try to avoid any big losses there. But back to, I want to come back to our Employee Assistance Program. That's a program that, again, we feel is, is a risk management program, one to try to intervene early, to try to help all. And really, that program is included with coverage, it's confidential, there's no additional costs, it's for all of Clay County employees, all elected officials and dependents. Up to six visits per issue, not per year, per issue. And these last couple of years, there's been a lot of issues for a lot of us. And so we really encourage, again, to try to reach out. Clay County's been doing a nice job there, because again, it's almost at 6% of usage. We hope to get over 4. So again, that just means that you're getting that information out there, and people are reaching out for help. We applaud that effort as well. So I would encourage you to continue that, to try to reach out to folks. Again, that's a, it's a, it's a great professional counseling program by Sand Creek. They have additional programs for elected officials, also for law enforcement personnel, and we appreciate all that they do. But also, there is a coaching program for supervisors that is unlimited. And again, it tries to help build teams within your environment, again, so that coaching program is quite good, so we strongly encourage that one as well. Lastly, again, just want to thank our Commissioners for all that you do, and how you can continue to encourage and support what's happening here at the county. Again, supporting the risk management and loss control efforts, we applaud that and thank you for that. We recommend to utilize your knowledge of MCIT's coverage to help inform making your decisions, and also reach out to us if you have ever any questions. You know, reaching out to Steve again is, I wonder how MCIT would cover or not cover that? So we're here to help. Again, remember, we're on your team, we're, we're here to help. So again, one of the examples would be a cyber claim. We strongly recommend, you know, you're trying to figure out what may or may not have happened, submit the claim, let us help. We have third-party experts at your beck and call, and so we want to put them in, but we need to hear from you. So if something were to happen, file the claim immediately, get us on board, we're here to help, and we'll get those great experts on board. Supporting, again, the, the Safety Committee, your Return to Work Program, just encouraging training and, and participating yourselves, we appreciate that, and just engaging MCIT like we're doing here today. So we greatly thank you and appreciate that. Well, on behalf of the MCIT Board of Directors, and really all of our MCIT service team, we just want to thank you, and we appreciate your ongoing support, your participation, and really just being, you know, in MCIT with all of us. We greatly appreciate that. So thank you so much. That really concludes my report, and I'm here for any questions you might have.
I thought at the beginning you said something about not being covered or something, make sure they were covered in every facet. How do we know whether we're covered in every facet, or is there anything we're, we're missing, or do we have a checklist, or?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is that regarding cyber coverage, all of MCIT?
All of MCIT coverage that we, is there something that we could be missing?
Well, we're saying, no, I think, Mr. Chair, I think my, my point was that we are continually trying to change and update our coverage to meet our county's needs. You know, for example, whether it be in, in our, in our law enforcement coverages, a new one is drone coverages. Again, we keep expanding our coverage as our counties develop and expand on their own. So we, we just try to adjust our coverage to what our counties need.
We had something to the county, do we have to tell you about that, or like drone coverage, or something like that?
Typically, yeah, you know, in a sense, usually we try to, you know, bring out alerts, bring out information that we've, we've heard from a county, other counties in this situation. So again, we can try to share that information.
Mr. Chair, I think, first of all, we appreciate the work that Tom, Tom does and, and his staff. We, we constantly utilize their services, not just for the risk-sharing pool, but many of the things that, that were mentioned, and almost every one of those multiple things that we've utilized in the last six months. And so that's great. To your, to your question, Mr. Chair, is our departments, one, once they do make a purchase, they're, they submit, submit that information to MCIT online to get that insurance. We also do ongoing annual inspections internally to make sure that everything is included. A list comes out each year. And coincidentally, today, MCIT has been on campus today and yesterday reviewing all of our buildings and making sure that we have proper insurance on those buildings that are $100,000 and higher, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
I'm always curious about the refund at the end of the year, so.
It's down.
So I'm going to the two gold boxes, if I may. Is, is, when you set that initial rate, is that going to our, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, but is that going to our, the rate projected using our factor for workman's comp, and, or is it, is that what we pay, and then is it the dividend itself that is the refund, based on, you understand what I'm getting at? Pay a premium, and then late near, it seems like we get whatever money back. Is that on that year's claims, or is that a dividend of past performance over that five years that you talked about?
Okay, I think I, Mr. Chair, yeah, Commissioner Kravenoff, I think, that's why I tried, in the, in the two boxes, I guess the orange and the blue, as, as they, as they say, you know, dividends really, again, they, they look back. And so again, whether or not actuarially they can, you know, present a dividend, a lot of that is, you know, how were, how was the, the past claim experience, looking back? Was it as expected? Was it more than expected, less than expected? And then, so that's, that's a big part of whether or not dividends are available. And that's why in, in this particular year, it was really one of the first years that property casualty did not have a dividend. That is rare. And, and so again, that is because unfortunately, the claim activity around property casualties, around all that storm and property damage, as well as the jail liability, so again, that was a little bit more than expected. And again, our investments, we can only invest as the county can. So that's looking back on the dividend. So then actuarially, they decided the property casualty is fine, I mean, everything is fully funded. However, there just was not enough excess then to return money on the, on the property casualty side, but they did on the workers' compensation. So now how rates are set, so that's why I say, you know, rates look forward. And, you know, what is all of our members' exposures, what are the MCIT's operations costs, and what would be anticipated? And so that's how much then is built into the rates for compensation to come in. So it's not totally just compensation in, money not spent, dividends back out. So there's a little bit more, it's, it's a, it's a full actuarial process that they look at, looking forward as well as looking back. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And then one last question, is it based on Clay County alone, or is it the whole?
MCIT as a whole, yeah. And then, and then there's, then it's a portioned, backed by, you know, each, each member's then contribution, as well as, as distribution.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Tom, on the property and casualty, the, when Steve mentioned that we, every time we purchase something new, we notify MCIT, and, and that, of course, is subject, can be subject to human error. And I know in our solid waste department, it wasn't too long ago that we realized that we had a piece of equipment that was valued at, what, 3/4 of a million dollars? That was, it was not put on the list to be insured. So do you, do you offer any sort of a checklist, checklist type of a deal for supervisors within all county departments that can help them? You know, I mean, it's, it's one thing to, to maybe put something on, but then sometimes that's replaced, and do we, how do, how do we know then to take it off, too, so that we don't keep paying premiums on something that we don't have anymore?
Right.
So do you have, do you have a tool that can help with that?
Well, we, I don't, yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we, we do have some tools. We also, you know, just recently, as last year, we had a, one of our virtual programs was called Protect Your Property, and we actually tried to, we invite, and Clay County actually had quite a few folks there, to kind of review all the different departments. Nobody knows the department's like the department. They know what they have and what they don't have, what's new, what's old, what they've deleted, what they've torn down, what they've built. So we try to, you know, list those, it's hard to get all of those on a checklist. You know, you have, you have autos, you have equipment, you have buildings, contents we look at to make sure contents are all on there. Property in the open was a big part, to make sure all your fences and parking lot lighting, and all of those things are listed. All we can do is, yeah, we try to lay out a lot of those tools, and then try to be there at your beck and call if you have any questions. You know, would that go on electronic data processing, or is that more mobile equipment? And what would be contents? What's part of the building? So those are the kind of questions. And then, again, as going through here now, doing the inspections, they're looking at buildings $100,000 or more. So like you mentioned, equipment is one to try, is harder to keep your handle on, because when it comes on, either, either comes through finance, or comes through somewhere, or the, somebody tries to make sure that it gets on the schedule, so.
And maybe, maybe something, maybe something, obviously not to, to be able to keep, you know, MCIT certainly can't be monitoring every purchase that we make, but something, something that can might remind department heads on an ongoing basis that, you know, to be checking for additions or deletions that may not have been properly added on or taken off.
Mr. Chair, MCIT annually provides us a, a list of our vehicles, our insurance vehicles, and as part of that, they also then, they also then, we have, we have a list of what's on our schedule, so we, they can't dictate what's not on our schedule, but what that does allow for is our department heads, and again, subject to human error, but, but take that list and go through it to verify what we have versus what, what's on the list. And so that does happen annually. In, in addition, as Tom mentioned, on the off-years that they're not here at the board, they also make themselves available to us, us as a management group. And so to, to provide, we go through the updates annually of any major changes, but then our department heads are also hearing, are, are able to hear those changes. And sometimes, almost every time, we find those times where they say, well, what about this? No, you got to get her on the list, or you may have it in the wrong, wrong coverage area.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess this just was an informational thing, and very, very, it was very informational. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get down. With that, we'll move on to request for a letter to support to send to state legislators advocating for a fingerprinting site in Clay County.
I'll go ahead and start that, Mr. Chair, if I may. I brought, first of all, this, this issue, and Rhonda, you might want to come up, because I might lean on you a little bit. The issue regarding citizens' access to fingerprinting and background studies is something that I think all of us have heard a lot about in recent months. As a little backstory, we're head, and Clay County citizens, at one point, were needing to drive to Fergus Falls to be fingerprinted, so about 120-mile round trip for folks to do that. Because there was a lot of complaints about that, the DHS contracted with Anet Geo, I think is the name of the company, they opened a site in, at the Marriott. They opened a site in, at the Marriott in Moorhead with very, very limited hours, hours that were really problematic for people that needed to access that, hours that were inconsistent in terms of the availability to actually have people see someone while they were there. And since then, the company was moved to Fargo. And so Minnesota citizens were needing to go to North Dakota to access the opportunity to be fingerprinted. This is something that's a requirement for daycares and child, childcare facilities, but also CNAs. And we need that programming for a lot of our sheriff's department, probation, juvenile. It really affects not only county government and our, our staffing issues, but a lot of the private companies as well. Now we're hearing that the Fargo site is really backlogged. There's been a couple resignations in the employees that are working there. Oftentimes, it's a six-week delay for people to even get in. And then we're seeing months background, months delay in the background checks. So in working with Rhonda and your staff and Mayor Shelley Carlson and Derek LaPointe and some of the larger employees in the community and also Representative Keeler, we have identified that there needs to be some more local pressure on DHS, the contract with the North Dakota site. We really do need to have a Minnesota and Clay County facility. With there, it's just such a, if we're the fourth fastest growing metro in the state, we have to have a local site. And wanted to put this on the agenda because I think as a full board, we support this. I think we're all on a different committees where this has been an issue. Staffing is hard right now. Having a six to twelve week delay in the requirements for employment is not helpful. Those employees are gone by the time the information is ready. So I know, Rhonda, you've been having a lot of phone calls. Steve has been working really hard on this as well. If there's any items I can't fill in, they're the pros.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Mojo, for bringing this topic to the commission. Yes, we have had multiple conversations on this topic with folks from the governor's office, DHS, folks from the OIG's office, our local folks, our local legislators. And we've been continuing to work on this issue, not only just the fingerprinting site issues, but also our background studies in general. And so I brought our other experts, Jessica Mickelson, who's been very involved in communication with stakeholders. And Alex Ishag is our net study, our background study expert. And I know this is an issue that she's been pretty fired up about as well, boots on the ground. She hears real specifically the issues that our folks face, particularly folks that are trying to get licensed for childcare, foster care, and some of those critical services that we need. So maybe, Jessica, do you want to fill in kind of some details?
Well, I just want to explain a little bit more in depth, but thank you, Commissioner Mojo. That was a very, very good thorough overview. But what we've been dealing with is really two separate issues. We do not have access to a sustainable fingerprinting site in Clay County is one primary issue that I feel we at the local level may be able to, you know, do a little bit more about. The other issue that our staff are dealing with is just the whole background studies process through NetStudy is the division within DHS that does them. And I did just write down a few talking points about that, just so you guys can kind of understand what we're dealing with and what NetStudy deals with. So for instance, in 2022, DHS processed 544,000 background study applications. So they're working with over 35,000 different entities or employers that need their employees to have a background study. In order for that to be completed, obviously the person needs to have a fingerprint taken. Since NetStudy first launched in 2017 as a department through the Department of Human Services, we in Clay County have had four different agencies enter into a contract with the company that oversees fingerprinting for the state. They're called Idemia. So we've had CCRI connections and Access stopped providing fingerprinting in November. But Idemia will only allow Clay County to have one fingerprinting location because we're only processing about 400 fingerprints a month. However, to us, that's a pretty impactful number when we are having to send our providers to Fergus Falls or Ogama or wherever it may be to get their fingerprints taken. I don't know, Alex, did you have anything else to add to that?
I think it becomes an issue as well because the people that need to be fingerprinted only have a two-week period to get their fingerprints completed once they set up their account in NetStudy. And we do have the ability to ask for a 30-day extension on that. But when the Fargo site currently only has four days in the month of May that they're doing fingerprinting, that may be outside of that two-week window. And then, you know, for example, if you have a childcare provider that needs fingerprinting done, they have to close down their childcare or find a sub to drive to Fergus or Monoman, you know, because it's almost an hour each way and then to do the appointment and then come back. And I just, I don't think that's fair to our applicants and the people that we work with. And it just, it seems a little unreasonable for considering the size of our county that do require fingerprints.
What were the other two sites? Excuse me, did you say Fergus Falls and Ogama?
Ogama has a fingerprinting location too. However, the contract that the Department of Human Services has with Idemia states that no fingerprint applicant should have to travel more than 35 miles to get their fingerprints taken. So right now, the contract that, well, with it, since we have the Fargo site, I guess we're within that required 35 miles, but they're only offering four days over the course of the next month where they're offering fingerprints. This new location in Fargo opened in April and within about a week, two of their three staff who had been trained and vetted through to process Minnesota background studies resigned. So they have one staff person who can do our background studies.
Does, does the state have contracts with this organization exclusively? Or do they have other?
No, exclusively. The other.
I guess I, it, it stymies me. Are, are they servicing other agencies besides us on this state contract? They're located in Fargo. That makes little sense to me.
Well, Idemia is actually a nationwide company. They're actually based out of France. And so they provide this service for the majority of government entities throughout the U.S. and various other countries.
This one employee is only servicing us four days out of the month?
Not even, actually two days in May and two days in June.
How many other clients do they have in the area that they're also servicing?
Right, it's not just Clay County. It's anyone that needs to have this process done has four days in May. And just to add, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Well, so in between the time when Access stopped providing fingerprinting in November of 2022 till April, when this new entity got up and running by Idemia, the company themselves did send two of their staff to Moorhead. They operated out of a hotel room at the Marriott, which I know a lot of our staff felt very uncomfortable about sending fingerprint subject studies to a hotel room because, you know, you're just.
Agreed, that's inappropriate.
Right.
That's not appropriate.
And so what we've done, Rhonda, I believe you've spoken with Mr. Larson and Joe over at the Family Service Center. We have offered to Idemia to utilize a room within the Family Service Center for free at no charge to them if they would temporarily send staff to add additional fingerprinting days. So that it could be done locally.
And, and I think that's a piece that we need to identify in the letter. There seems to be a broken line of communication. In meetings, three weeks ago, we were with a representative from DED and he was shocked that Minnesota funds were contracting with a company to set up shop in North Dakota to offer this. So I, I think we, we need to tell our story, talk about the issues, not only Clay County, but I, I know I, Eventide and M State have also offered sites. I think there was a, a cost barrier in those, but as Rhonda and staff have identified, we're willing to host this site because it's such a vital need.
Yeah, I think in, in some conversations we had, we were thinking we were successful in getting Idemia to agree to two sites in our area. They were still planning to open up the Fargo site. And honestly, I'm not sure if DHS understood that Idemia was opening the site in Fargo. I'm not sure if they knew that until we kind of brought that to their attention. So we were having numerous conversations with President Brimhall with M State and they certainly have come to the table and have expressed an interest in providing this service. They had multiple conversations with Idemia as well and we had DHS staff on. And as they kind of did the calculation in terms of how they would be paid for their site, there was a gap in what they would be paid versus what their cost would be. And that certainly was a concern, of course, to how to make this sustainable long-term. So the conversations just kind of sat for a little bit. We were optimistic that although they were located in Fargo, they were going to be fully staffed Monday through Friday. I think they were going to have Saturday hours. And then, as you heard, that quickly fell apart within a week. So I think we have to resurrect those conversations and kind of identify where the gap is and partner together with a plan.
So Rhonda, so, so does the DHS, do they, do they have sole control over the ability to hire for fingerprinting and background checks? Is it, is it totally under the discretion of DHS?
Well, DHS has the authority over the contract with Idemia because when we were having conversations with DHS and putting some pressure on the fact that we really needed some action, I think they were able to influence and hold Idemia to the elements of the contract.
Rhonda, maybe if I, if I can, when I, where I'm, where I'm going with this is, if we can't get proper support for what we need in Clay County, can we go outside the bounds and do something on our own?
I'm not sure. I.
I mean, I mean, seriously, because, I mean, quite frankly, I, I've seen where we can be waiting forever for legislation on things. And the problem is now. And, you know, and I don't know, you know, you know, we've done things in the past, for example, with ARPA funds that can get something started until something can develop. It seems to me that the time is now to be acting on this. I, I fully support what Commissioner Mojo wants to do here with, with writing a letter and ultimately being done. But, but I don't know if our hands are tied. Do we, you know, there's got to be other people who could be qualified to, to do fingerprinting and, and do background checks.
And I think that's important to note. We have direct conversation based on email chains this week with the Assistant Commissioner of DHS. And I think their eyes were wide open about the issues. There's some internal negotiation about what a partner side would look like. But they need, they've advised that this letter is that, that step that could help that.
And I, I fully, I fully support.
But I agree with what you're saying. I think at some point in negotiation, it needs to say, which we've done with, unfortunately, other state agencies, we need a solution. We need it now. We can't wait for the bureaucracy.
I mean, we're, we're in a, you know, we're working hard, whether it's with, with childcare, home childcare, foster care, and many other things that require, you know, background checks in many other areas as well. But, but when there's such a delay to even be able to get them, I can see where some of these people just say, I'm, I'm done, I'm just going to walk. I'm, I'm no longer interested in doing this.
Just for my perception of what we need, I'm assuming they're not using the old rolling roller. If this is an automated system, you're going to have to have equipment that came, put it into the DHS servers. So this isn't something we could use equipment we already have on hand. Sheriff's Office puts it into the, pardon, public safety servers. This is something that we would have to tie into a pre-existing protocol, equipment, and server.
Yeah, and I think, and Jessica and Alex can add to this, but we could put ourselves out to Idemia to say we, we would operate the site. Clay County would be the organization to operate the site. We could set our hours, we could work with them on that. And they would pay us per applicant fingerprint that we do. There, what we realize is there will be a gap from what you get paid versus what the cost is, but that's something to evaluate. The other piece to that is in being a, a site like that, we would, we're not isolating it, we're, we're serving the community. Anybody who goes on the site to register for a fingerprint, then we would serve. And I believe under that scenario, they would provide the equipment.
Correct.
Yes, yep.
We have got a correctional facility. We have law enforcement agencies with retirees. I think we probably have people that would either do it for overtime or a, a secondary employment who would be perfectly qualified to operate that equipment. It's not, it's not a real tough curve. Again, I, I did it years ago, but I don't want to do it again. But it's, it's a, it's a one-day training.
We did ask for the contract and requirements that would be necessary if we wanted to be a site. So we do have that information. And certainly if the commission would like, we can, you know, maybe form a smaller committee and vet that through and talk about what options or ideas there might be for them.
Well, I, you know, I, I think, you know, we came here today and I think the deal today is, is, is the letter of support, which I think we should do. In the meantime, I, you know, Commissioner Mojo has been on this subject right now and maybe working, maybe she could continue to work with Rhonda and Jessica and whoever else there to, I don't, I don't think we should, should ignore the fact that if this is going to be a constant wait for somebody else's blessing, that what can we, what can we do to offer to, to put a carrot out there to speed this up to get it in Clay County? And I, I just think that, you know, we just heard from MCIT where they got the, the big counties in the metro area on their own, do their own things. We're, we're getting to be a big county and we, you know, we don't need Big Brother to, to help us.
I wouldn't want to take the option, I think, if we continue to get slow response from St. Paul, to look at them supplying us with the equipment to handle it in-house.
Well, I just want to add a couple of things, going back to what Commissioner Campbell was saying. Really, the contract is through Idemia. So they are contracted through DHS to do these NetStudy background checks, which is the requirement.
Was that an exclusive deal given to them?
Yes.
That's, okay.
But this not only impacts our childcare, in-home childcare providers, our centers, this impacts our detox, West Central, I mean, several entities within Clay County itself. So this has been an ongoing, you know, internal discussion that we've been having. And Rhonda and I have discussed hosting, being the fingerprinting site. However, we really need something that's more operational, at least on Saturdays, some evening hours so that you're opening it up to your childcare providers and your center workers who, those are the hours that they're required to work. So it really needs to be something with expanded hours too.
So Idemia, does it pick and choose?
They are responsible for finding the location. However, we, they have, you know, reached out to, to many of the businesses and agencies within Clay County. and agencies within Clay County to, to find-
And as long as they're reliable in, in what they do, then it's for us to find, I feel, a place, to use your word, sustainable, you know, that we have something on a consistent manner. I mean, when I hear the number 400 foot, uh, fingerprints a month, I mean, that turns into a big number.
And I think the previous agencies who had done it, CCRI connections and access, I don't think that they anticipated the volume. I think it just grows and grows. And so I don't think that they themselves could staff it for, for what it turned out to become.
This, this goes as very similar, Commissioner Mojo, to the, the dilemma that we're faced with even in, in licensing for, that the state runs even in motor vehicle and licensing. And, and, you know, we have one licenser, I think, in the area here, and we're having to have our Clay County residents, in some instances, drive to Becker County or Bemidji to, to have a driver's test done. That, that, it's the same type of thing that's, it's just nonsense for, for a county of our size to not have adequate service for our, for our people. But anyway, I, I, I think, you know, Rhonda and I, hopefully, you guys can look at if we could establish some way to house it here, and we need to do it. Our businesses will benefit from it.
Who are you looking at providing the services? That your department or Sheriff's Department or?
Well, I, you know, I suspect, I think under the contract, they require three people to be trained. And also, the, the more availability or hours that you offer, the payment changes between three and, I think, $5 per applicant fingerprint. So I think we'd have to vet that out. What would be the best department to host it in terms of location, availability of maybe some early evening, some Saturday times, and what staffing resources we would need to do it? So I think there could be various options.
And I'm looking at, you're saying 400 a month, and they're only open two days a month. They can't even get 400 a month through in two days, can they?
No.
So the rest of the people who aren't fortunate enough to get one of those appointments have to travel to Fergus, Fauz, or Ogama?
So I guess the action that I would ask the board to support today is to send a letter in corris, correspondence, collaboration with our social service department and the city of Moorhead to all of our elected leaders in Clay County, Representative Joy, Representative Keeler, Representative Keel, Senator Kubeck, and Senator Johnson, as well as copying DHS and the governor's office on this, as they will be awaiting, because of the discussion we've had, that, and hopeful that we can get it together by the middle of this week.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Get the letter prepared to get support. Any further discussion?
Is there, would we, do we have the ability or could we be thinking about offering, can we find a place within our current campuses where we could house this if we needed to?
I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, what we've talked about, at least on the short-term basis, and was working with Joe to, to set up something within our conference space over at the Family Service Center. It'd be easy access to, for our citizens. Right now, it would, with it not being full-time, they would tear it down, take it out, and so it would still allow for, for time for our staff.
But it seems to me if we have the ability to do that, maybe we could even incorporate that into the, into the letter we're sending, that we're, you know, we'll even volunteer our location. You know, if that's okay with your, your motion to include- Huh? Okay. Dave, can you make that, is that okay with your motion to include that?
That wouldn't hurt any counterarguments they have, even though you've had the discussion. When the electeds get this and they start asking questions, we want them to know that's been an option that's been offered. So yeah, that's very-
And just to clarify, what we've offered at this point is for IEDMIA to run that, so it wouldn't be Clay County employees. Because in order for us to get vetted to do this, it takes up to 120 days, and we need something more immediate. So the previous temporary site that was being operated out of the Marriott, that was being ran by IEDMIA employees. So that's what we're offering at this point, just the space for them to use while they're adding-
And I think what the commissioners are also doing is opening the door for the future discussions that Commissioner Campbell had talked about. If we reach an impasse, at least you have guidance from the board that we'd be open to doing whatever it takes to identify a solution.
Well, this, this impacts the business community.
Yeah.
You know, working families, it impacts everybody, and it needs to be done.
Okay, we got a motion. At this time, it's just to write a letter to support that we will support the fingerprinting thing. Okay? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you for being part of this, and thank you, Board, for your help on that.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the recognition and proclamation for childcare provider appreciation day for May 9.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Clay County's childcare providers and offer a proclamation. And with me, I have Julie Clear, who is one of our childcare licensers, and then Gail Burnside is also with me as one of our foster care licensers. Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
Yes, we do. Okay. I guess first of all, I'll probably just read the proclamation and, "Whereas Clay County and another organization nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas over half of the children under the age of six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in an unparental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block of our country's economic. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardship for childcare providers and the families of Clay County who depend on them, who have continued to meet the needs of families while remaining open to providing childcare throughout the pandemic, and whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, we, Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 9, 2023, as Provider Appreciation Day in Clay County, and we call upon all citizens to recognize the contributions made by our childcare providers for their important work."
Mr. Chair, I'd move the proclamation.
Second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to second the proclaiming proclamation. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I just do have, Julie did put together a few updates that she wanted to just bring to the board's attention regarding childcare.
Hi. I had an opportunity recently to go to a state conference, and the Division of, or sorry, the Department of Human Services did share a few upcoming legislative updates. Just wanted to let you know about a few of them. One of the things is that the family childcare statutes for safe sleep and then also the fire codes will be moving towards the same alignment with the American Academy of Pediatrics and their statements for safe sleep. And then also the fire codes would be updated to copy that of the fire, state fire marshal codes. The fire marshals would also be able to do some variances in our homes that they do an inspection for. So that might be with windows or any of the fire codes, they can give variances out. Another thing that's going to be taking place is that we're moving to an online application process for family childcare, in-home family childcare. And then also moving towards continuous licenses, so they won't be renewed every two years. It'll run from January through December, and that'll give us the opportunity as licensers to go out there at different times of the year, not centered around when they've been licensed. So if we have, the majority of ours are different months, but now we can see summer activities, winter activities, for some that we never had a chance to do that. The state has proposed some funding for those two-year, while everything is in transition, so that the fees for new applicants and then also ongoing licensing fees will be waived or funded through the state to help everyone acclimate to this new schedule.
And also, Rhonda and I met with Karen Pfeiffer, the CEO of Creating Community Consulting last week, and I just had two updates from her that I wanted to share. She recently met with Senator Kubeck, City Councilwoman Deb White, Thomas Hill from Ascencia, and representatives from Jasmine Childcare. And during that meeting, Senator Kubeck did offer to author a bill to request the $40,000 feasibility study money that they would need to get kind of going with the multi-use building in the Ramke Park neighborhood that would house the Jasmine Childcare Center. So more to come on that as that moves along through the legislator, legislature. And she also shared that the Cass Clay Community Land Trust, which is also kind of heading or sparing the multi-use family resource building project, has submitted two proposals, one to Senator Klobuchar and the other to Senator Smith, both for $1 million each for funding to support that project as well. So just wanted to share those updates as well.
Okay. Got a motion on the, or any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask, the fees that are being waived, is that, is that in addition to what we've? Didn't we do, didn't we include some fee waivers within our funding through ARPA that we?
We did. So our ARPA funding is for another year until May, I believe, of 2024. The continuous license would start in January of 2023, so that would be overlapping a little bit, but not by much.
2024 it would start.
Sorry, yes.
So next year.
So does the state have a fee too?
No.
They don't. Our understanding is that with this continuous license, the state will be collecting the funds from everybody and then redistributing to the counties. So they will no longer pay Clay County with a check or a money order. It'll go to the state at some point, and then they would be sending it to the counties.
Interesting. That's interesting.
We'll see how that all plays out once it comes.
Yes, what goes to the state stays at the state.
Especially since we've been waiving fees. We'd be redistributing it, so we'll have to figure that out when the time comes.
So you're going to do the proclamation for foster care appreciation too? I'm just a busy person today. Okay.
Did you want me to read it, Frank? Would you like it or?
Well, you can do that, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Let me take a sip first.
Get close to the mic, please.
Here my throat here. All right, Foster Care Month proclamation. Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community, and whereas foster parents provide an invaluable service to the children, youth, and families of Clay County, and whereas foster parents give generously of themselves to provide nurturing, safety, guidance, hope, and love in a safe, secure, and stable home, and whereas foster parents recognize the opportunity to help a child or youth and their family in ways that will influence them and become a supportive and lasting presence for the remainder of their lives. And whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts to children whose families are in crisis play a vital role helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into a successful adulthood. And whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a greater need for more foster families. And whereas, May 2023 Foster Care Appreciation Month in Clay County is an appropriate opportunity to thank the families who embrace the often thankless responsibility of providing a home and family to children in need of affection, love, and security, and to support the efforts of those who dedicate their time to children in and leaving foster care.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
No, second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Foster Care Month proclamation. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I did bring Gail Burnside, who is our, one of our foster care licensers, just to kind of give a brief update for what's happening in foster care right now.
Morning. We really have a great group of individuals and families that have come forward and continue to open their homes and to drop everything at a moment's notice when I give them a call when a child is in need. We currently have 36 non-relative foster homes with 14 other individuals or families in current application to be licensed. And we have currently 17 relative foster homes with eight currently in application to be licensed as well. So great, wonderful group of individuals coming forward and spending lots of time licensing their homes and working with us. We continue to do lots of recruitment to get out in the community, to go to community events. This weekend, we were at Kids Fest recruiting for both child foster care and childcare homes. We have events throughout the summer plan where we're trying to get, again, in the community, make our need known, and hopefully more families will continue to come forward. But just a great, wonderful group of individuals and families that really are wonderful at helping us out in any given notice.
Do we ever run out of foster care homes? And if we do, what do we do about it?
We have a lot of kids also placed within the state of Minnesota that don't meet our level of care. So a lot of home, a lot of children with just some more complex needs that just our homes can't meet. And so because of that, then they're, they're being placed with a therapeutic foster care agency, group home setting, higher-level care to meet those needs. So that, that does happen, that our families aren't able to, to meet those needs.
But for the ones we can, or that are, we're okay with, how, how are we doing on that group?
You know, I, I always feel like we always need more homes, you know? I have, you know, certain families take a long placement, and then they need, they take a break. And we encourage that. We welcome that. So oftentimes, a, a family may be licensed, but they may only take a certain age group because that's what fits in their home. So just because they're licensed doesn't mean they'll take anywhere from zero to 18. So I, I feel like we always need more homes for different age groups. But also, recently, we all, we also had a teenager that was placed, and I was able to call one of my homes and say, I know this is not typical of what you want in your home, but here's a situation. Can you help me out? And, you know, they called me right back, and they're like, of course we can. That's what I mean, like, we have this great group of families that really come, come forth to help out, even when it's not something they ideally had thought would be a, an option for them.
Gail, I apologize. What was the 17? You said the 30. What's the 17?
Yep, 17 relative foster families. So a lot of times when kids come into care, if there's grandparents, aunts and uncles, significant relationship with the kids, then we license those relatives as well.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Gail, thank you for the work that you do, and you are right. We have a fantastic group of individuals that help a really painful time. So I'm, I'm thankful for those that have stepped forward and agreed, however we can help get more foster families or homes, let's do it. Sometimes people know their limits, and that may not be their gift and/or calling. If someone wanted, I know-
If someone wanted, I know there's service organizations that talk about care packages for some of these littles that in the middle of the night need to be placed with nothing. If they, if someone watching saw that this is an area where there's some need, a blanket or a toy or stuffed animal, who do they contact?
You know, that's more so, I, I have them reach out to our other community partners. We don't necess, it's more of the case managers that are doing that versus me helping set that up. So I know we have blankets at our, at our office, but I'm not sure where they're coming from. But I know there are people in my agencies that do know that, but I'm not sure of where that's.
All right, I think that would be maybe helpful, because that's a question that I get as a four-age leader sometimes, is our club wants to do this, it would be a way to pay it forward to some of the young people in our community in crisis.
Can I comment? Yeah, they certainly can connect with myself, and I'll get them to the right people in our department, and we can work with that organization, identify what it is if they like to donate.
Okay.
Either we will take it in, or we will work with our foster parents or other organizations to.
Great. So the contact is Rhonda?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any further questions? Anything further that is present? Okay, well, thank you very much, Michelle, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Looks like they're all gonna leave us now. Justin, you are next on the purchase for two tandem axle plow trucks.
Yes.
And Brad along with you there?
Yep. Good morning. So I'm here seeking approval to purchase two tandem axle plow trucks. On 2021, we purchased a Kenworth truck. We've had really, really good luck with it so far. So we moved in this direction due to some wire, wiring harness issues we were experiencing with the freight liners that we had been purchasing, as well as power issues. And since then, it has been extremely difficult to purchase trucks, whether it be Kenworth or any other sort of trucks. And we've been working with Walworks since 2021 to even get on a list to purchase another truck. So we do have the opportunity to purchase two trucks to replace a 2006 and a 2009 truck in our fleet. So internal service funds would be used from units 120 and 127. And there is a little bit of a shortage, I did put that in the packet. And in reviewing the internal service fund with Lori, we were able to identify some additional funds and a piece of equipment that we do, we do not intend to ever replace. That piece of equipment's a 1996 Fiat blade. And yeah, I guess so with the quote from Walworks, that would be utilizing Sourcewell pricing at a price of $173.733 per truck. And then as far as the box hydraulics, plow, and snow equipment, that would be coming from Towmaster, and that's a Minnesota State bid item at $162.929 per truck.
Okay. The cost of equipping these trucks is just as much as the truck almost.
Mm-hmm.
All righty.
We are, like I said, we're very fortunate to even get our name on the list. It's been extremely difficult to buy trucks especially. They've been even more difficult than vehicles.
All righty.
Mr. Chair. I have a question in regards to timing. When do you anticipate that they'll be fit up and then delivered?
So the chassis would be here, potentially one in third quarter and one in fourth quarter. And then as far as the snow equipment, this, we'd be lucky to get them done by April. So the chance of this even being next winter, being used next winter is slim.
Slim, okay, thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Mr. Chair, this was brought before the Highway Committee, and we agree that this is recommended that we should move forward with these purchases.
Okay, we've got a motion to purchase.
I'll second the motion.
We got a second, any further discussion?
I just had a clarification on the shortage that you identified in terms of the purchase. Can you?
Yep, so that $40,462.20, so that's a shortage from units 120 and 127 in both the truck and the box hydraulics and plow. And then the 115.497.54 is the balance in the fund, ISF balance for the Fiat motor grader. So we would use 40,000 out of that 115. And then I'm also, as part of this too, I'd be requesting permission to sell units 155 and 172, but I think I'm gonna wait until we kind of see what the market's doing as far as a minimum bid on those.
Right.
But.
Because there is a chance, based on what the market is doing, that that minimum bid would be low considering what the market is doing.
Correct.
So there's, there's more opportunity for revenue.
Yep.
How many freight liners do we have on?
Well.
It looks like we're switching over to Kenworth.
Oh, we only have one Kenworth, we have one Mack.
Turn your mic on.
We have one Kenworth, one Volvo, and one Mack in the fleet, the rest are freight liners.
Nine freight liners.
So there's nine freight liners.
Okay. So we're looking to replace them all eventually?
Eventually, we would hope to, yes.
Okay.
And Commissioner Mojo, in response to your question too, so, so after using that $40,462.20 of the Fiat balance, that remaining $75,000, I think Justin's talked to Lori about redistributing that to other areas when, within the Highway Internal Service Fund, with the idea in mind that the Fiat will.
Right.
We don't anticipate ever replacing that.
Correct.
So those, those dollars can become available within your department for other, other things that are.
Yep.
Might be short on, for example.
And on, on top of just looking at the Internal Service Fund for these trucks, her and I are sitting down and going through all of the items, because there's some different things we need to look at too.
I know on our, on our graders, we, we had established a, you know, a.
Seven-year.
Seven-year rotation.
Yep.
How are we on, on these types of trucks?
So I believe we are on eight, eight years.
And is that, does that kind of coincide with when warranty is up based on miles used, or?
So with the freight liners, we were doing a three-year warranty right away. And since we've, in the last couple of years, we've actually extended some of these warranties because of all the issues that we're, we've been having. But on, now correct me if I'm wrong, Clayton, but I think we moved to a five-year warranty.
Yes, we went to a five-year warranty, and I hate to say it, but that doesn't even cover the problems we have, because we keep the trucks a bit longer than that. But some of them become a backup truck, so they don't get used quite as much. But we try to keep the five-year warranty on the ones that we use the most, which are everyday drivers, to speak.
Well, there, you know, I think there becomes a time where, where it still is, is worth self-funding and maybe.
Yep.
Paying a little bit, you know, that a warranty wouldn't cover versus the cost of replacing too, when you start looking at these heavy costs of these.
We have to hedge our bet too at the beginning, because if you don't buy the warranty right upfront, right away, to try to add it later, it, it's so expensive. That's why we try to put the five-year on right away when we buy the truck brand-new now. So we get that at a much more, a better price than if we wait a couple of years and try to buy it later, then it's, it's.
An extended warranty is a little more expensive.
Oh, way more, way more.
I'm just somewhat curious, we talk about the purchase and we talk about the sale, but we talk about not getting the trucks till next April.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, how does that work for purchasing? And I just ask in a general way, going money out of this budget or next year's budget?
Well, that's kind of why I mentioned that as far as selling, that I wanted to wait until, to get approval to sell until we know when that will actually be. So the internal service balance fund shown, so for the truck chassis itself, is 2023 balance. And the, in the green where it's actual, the snow equipment, that's 2024 balance, because there is no chance that we will get.
All right, that answered that, thank you.
Clayton, do you have other trucks that you're working with Walwork on the warranty with?
Pardon me?
Do you, is Walwork doing the warranty work on any other equipment that we have?
No, no. The warranty work, we have to use the dealership for the warranty, like on the freight liners. We have taken some repairs that we couldn't keep up with this winter. Walworks did do some, but that wasn't warranty work at all.
As far as the issues we're having with freight liner, it has to go, Walworks isn't a freight liner dealer, so it has to go to either I State or what's the Fargo freight liner dealer?
Yep.
Any further discussion? You've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, that passes, we'll move on to the next item.
Yes, so the second item I have is seeking approval to purchase a Craftco Mastic Patcher off the Minnesota State bid for $84,531. This would be replacing our spray patcher, which has an internal service fund of $85,462.64. So the past few years, we've rented a Mastic machine for four to six weeks, and it costs 6,000, about 6,800 bucks a month to rent it. So last year, in June, I believe, I tried to, we did try to purchase a used one off a Min bid, so I did get permission to bid up to $30,000. We were unsuccessful in both of those that we tried. So, and there really hasn't been any this year on Min bid, which is kind of why I think this is the right direction to go. And I think it, in terms of the job that it does compared to the spray patcher, I think it's a much better product. So it actually, it's a 200-gallon tank, and the Mastic product itself has oil and gravel in it, so I think it holds a lot better than our spray patcher. And I would also propose that this would have a 10-year service life on it.
Again?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to purchase the Mastic machine? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Clayton, Brad.
And then the, the final item I have is for a claim settlement with Dennis Drews on the Cassaw One grading project. The proposed settlement would be $129,521.07. So I did run this by state aid, and this was approved. I did, a couple of weeks ago, I brought forward a number of 122.946.99. So that was missing a piece of equipment that was sitting idle on the job, which is the reason for the $7,000 increase.
I make a motion to approve the change.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the settlement agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In, in regards to that, then, you know, I think we've been working with our county attorney's office that this is, this is an expense that we believe was not, not our responsibility. And I, I know through our county attorney's office, we've been working on going to the entity that caused this delay. And Brian, well, I just want to be aware, be aware now that there's some other developments that, that I think we need to consider in our, what is our actual total cost of the delay that goes beyond this settlement. Because originally, had that delay not occurred, it was in our five-year plan that that road would have been constructed this year. And now because of that, now, now there's the extra blading that's being done, there's the cost that we're gonna have to put on there for the.
Dust control.
Dust control.
Calcium chloride.
Potentially more than once a year, that isn't cheap. And then just thinking about now, it's delayed our ability to bid this project for another year. And, you know, so we've all seen what additional costs happen when you have to have something delayed a year. So I don't, I'm just bringing that up as things that I think we should be considering as, as additional costs that were associated for something that happened that didn't need to happen.
Right.
There's, I'm, I'm not suggesting a motion at this time or anything, but I'm just kind of, I think we should be aware of that, and.
And as.
Brian, maybe you can work with.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think Justin and Mike have already been talking and discussing a lot of those issues.
And yeah, as far as tracking the blading and the dust control costs, those are all very easy to calculate, as far as knowing what the cost difference would be between this year and next year.
Oh, he wouldn't know, don't they?
Yeah. But that, obviously, at the time you bid it, you should know, I mean, you'll know what the cost is then, you can look at what your estimate was the year prior, you'd have a really good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else we can do for you?
That's it today. Thank you.
All right. Okay, with that, we go into committee reports. Dave, would you like to start us off today?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, on the third and fourth, kind of an ongoing discussion precipitated by Commissioner Mojo. I had a discussion with Matt Hilgard, the AMC, regarding some of the pending cannabis legislation and the impact from public safety perspective on border cities. I also contacted Senator Kupac and had a discussion about some of the concerns. Basically, it revolved around the experience of this community when we have differential legislation involving controlled substances or intoxicants. We had some pretty impactful, and this was a little bit before my time, but anecdotally, I'm very familiar with it, pretty impactful number of issues for our law enforcement to respond when we had a one-hour open alcohol, licensed alcohol establishment. After Fargo's bars would shut down, there'd be an influx of intoxicated college students into, into Morehead just about every night, weekend night during the school session, and there'd be fights, a lot of automobile wrecks, a lot of DWIs, and it put a, a real strain on our ability to respond. We also ran into a number of issues involving synthetic, smokable products that were marketed as potpourri and bath salts and plant food, and just about anything but what they were, which was synthetic marijuana or synthetic cannabis of some sort. We had shops that were selling drug paraphernalia to 17-year-old kids that would walk across a bridge with it, and under North Dakota law, it'd be felony. The substances were regulated in North Dakota, and for about a year and a half, they weren't here. And we had a number of businesses open up, or established businesses start selling the stuff, created a lot of problems. And I think that we need local funding and local licensing control, and that's being worked out right now, but I expressed that to Senator Kupac. Some of the tax money that's collected on cannabis, and I'm not even going into the validity, or the, the desirability of the cannabis ordinance, this is simply the ability for the legislation that's currently being considered to give local government enough control and enough funding to adequately deal with the issues that, that occur. And that is particularly serious when you look at a border community where the legislation is different across the river. And we're part of a metro, we're splitting it, we're gonna have anybody, all the issues that are associated with legalization of cannabis is gonna impact our community to the tune of a quarter million people, not just the people that populate it now. So we have to deal with those issues. And that was a point of those discussions, and that's gonna be a work in progress. We'll see what the legislature is gonna do with it when the, the bills come out. On Thursday, the 4th, I had a remote meeting for the emergency communication system with the Legislative and Governance Committee, a member of that. We looked at a training that's gonna take place in Morehead for non-technical personnel to include board members and elected officials, that's gonna be at MSUM on the 15th, and I'm and I'm registered to attend that. It's basically to give non-technical people who are actually running this being, with county commissioners and other officials being part of the board, trying to give us an understanding of where we're going with next generation nine-one-one and a lot of the armor upgrades that are taking place and that we can anticipate with the legislature coming out with some funding this, this year. Also, there was some discussion about what's going to be in the omnibus bill, and the final conclusion was it's anybody's guess. We're going to see what's there when it comes out and hope for the best. On Friday, the fifth, myself and Commissioner Kravenoff, County Administrator Larson, met with Joe Rasso and Ryan Ashheim from the EDC, met with a number of, several people from Terricon, Cornelius Wimpf, Don Ochalter, and Keith Astrup, to discuss some of the needs for road improvements out in Spring Prairie and the areas around the Terricon plant. And that is, again, wondering what's going to be in the bill when it comes out, see if there's going to be state funding that's directed that way, and how we will respond as a county if there's state funding available, working with, in partnership with a private entity. It was a good discussion, but again, that's, kind of remains to be seen on where we're going with that. Yesterday, myself and County Administrator Larson, Commissioner Campbell, we met with authorities from the diversion to discuss Holy Cross Township's desire to have two roads over the embankment down in the southern area of the Red, where Holy Cross Township is. We had a, a meeting early in the day to discuss the issue, and then last night, myself and Commissioner Campbell had a discussion with township officials and their attorneys, along with attorneys for the diversion authority and officials from the diversion authority. I think it was constructive. I think we were able to indicate some options and explain to them where this is going to go in the future. But again, that is a work in progress. Commissioner Campbell's probably going to be able to give it in better context, given his experience in this, over the last, what, ten years at least.
A little more.
I'll let him, I'll let him pick that up and clarify it. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Paul.
So on Thursday, May fourth, in the morning, we had our intergovernmental meeting, and there'd been a survey that had been sent out about what the nature or the subject matter of our next intergovernmental retreat would be, the subject. And it kind of came back, the top ones were workforce, childcare. And anyway, after lengthy discussion, it, we're going to move toward arranging a retreat that will focus on childcare and the needs, the community throughout the county, and how to work with businesses on that. That was in, pretty much in the full nature of that, that meeting. Then I had a meeting, my monthly meeting with the Children's Mental Health, the, excuse me, the local advisory council, and we, as presented here to the, to the board, their action plan that I had, that was given. We, we talked about that a little more in depth, and looking at ways that we can continue to develop the plan and have a strategy, strategy and start execution, execution of some of those recommendations that were stated. Also, one part I, we had, we normally have a presentation that kind of stands out each month, and this time it was, and I, it's the second time I've been around, there was a gentleman through, I believe it was Clay County Corrections, I may be wrong on this, but anyway, under our upper grant, Alex Minke, is that correct? Do you know Steve? Yeah, I thought so. And anyway, he really gave a, a little deeper dive on how he's working with all the schools in, in Clay County daily. He's, he was hired on a two-year ARPA grant, and his point is to try to work, the word they use is restorative practices, so that when a student, you know, gets in trouble or there's a, an incident that is creating destruction, what they do is try to, rather than just having it go right to legal or create a citation or whatever, they try to first, try to bring the parties together and see if they, you know, mediate it and, and see if they can just come to a common agreement about what happened and, and the individuals involved. And then at that point, they would do what's called a, they did, try to, excuse me, they would have just a report in the file about the incident rather than a citation that then would go to the legal department. I think it's, sounds like it's working really well, and it'll be interesting when this grant is over, how you look at, you know, legal and everybody else look at this work he's doing, but it sounds like it's, the schools, the schools are having, they feel it's very successful and, and are really appreciative of the work he's doing. And then later that day, at the end of the day, Commissioner Campbell joined me, and we had the meeting with our Clay County Collaborative, and it was a lengthy meeting, and, and we're right at a place with the collaborative where they're making some big changes, or, you know, we're getting a new coordinator. So they had a screening committee, they came up with four individuals that applied for that position. We talked about the four, no one has, there's an offer out there, but nothing's in deep detail yet because we tabled it, and we're going to have another meeting on the twenty-third. And the reason for the delay is that we were reviewing the budget for next year, and our numbers guy over here, really, I, I thank you, Kevin, you were very helpful in, in that discussion, and, and we really broke the budget down, and, and the point was, there's a seventy-four, of the group of people that asked for these funds to do collaborative work, you know, for, for our youth and through other schools and other areas, there was a seventy-four percent increase, and it was just like
Requests.
Huh?
In requests.
In requests. And it was just unsustainable, we'd run out of money. So we crunched numbers, and it took about an hour, hour and a half, and I think we came down to something that was going to be sustainable, and so now they're going to go back through the requests that were given, kind of review them a little better and, you know, just see if there's any fat in it, so to speak, and kind of lean it out and get something so that all this very, very good work, necessary work that's being done, you know, we can fund and, and sustain to keep the program going. So, again, I, I thank you for joining us, and you, and you were part of that through Lakeland Health, right?
Yeah.
I believe, as a representative, and I was there as
No, not Lakeland Health, but Lakes Country Service Cooperative.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I think the Lakeland rep is Michael Card.
Yes.
Yeah, and he was there also. Thank you for that. All right. The following day, I, I was part of my Food Commission activities. I've been starting to attend First Fridays every Friday over at the Seven and Two Eaterys, and, and this one was on Little Free Gardens, you may see them around town, and right now there's about sixty people doing those throughout town, and, and so it was a little promo on that. Interesting, and then later in the day, going back to what Commissioner Ebinger already talked about, we're at a Terricon, very impressive place. EDC gave us a, also a forecast, financial forecast of what they could, you know, what they could bring to the county and our area, and it's impressive, and it's obviously, you know, their need to get this road, my understanding, can, there's a ten billion dollar bond that's in legislature right now as part of the infrastructure bill, and, and certainly if they, that is by far the first step, they need that, you know, to really get this moving. So, and I think you, we explained quite well that that capability is well beyond the county, but, you know, we'll see where those discussions go down the road. And then last, we had a, an eventful night at the Buffalo Red Watershed District, their monthly meeting. Pretty much, there were three citizens to be heard, kind of stating some issues as, you know, that things that happened close to them during the flood, and some concerns that they gave back to the board. Overall, I think it, in my view, it went well. There were some new people down there, there was a learning curve, we talked about that here last week, last week, I think it was, and here at commission. And once again, when I, I mentioned last night, trying to create that coordination with Buffalo Red and with, you know, our emergency coordinator, Gabe Twetton, and then Justin Sorm with the highway, and hopefully they'll, you know, every year's different, but, and how it all works, but at least to be aware of where the potential hotspots are and how to work with that, given whatever the situation is each spring. Christine, yeah, Christine Holland from River Capers was down there and asked for her annual request. I know as a commission, we've let that go to the watershed to be a partner in that on the North Dakota South, Southeast Resource, Water Resources District, donate similar to what, or the same that we do. Anyway, that, anyway, for the past, since two thousand and sixteen, that number has been fifty-five thousand, and she asked for an increase of that at ten grand, so she's up to sixty-five thousand. And they recently, you know, they do many, many things along the Red River, as well as, one thing I think is really big with the schools all around, they do Waters Festival, giving kids the ability, third, fourth graders, you know, learning about things about water, water quality and, and protection. And they had twenty-three hundred kids so far that they're doing festival work with. Another thing I just want to bring up on the ag area is the great work within the Watershed District that Woken Sol Water is doing in cover crops and soil health. They're kind of in the, one of the leaders in the state, and these projects that they're doing will certainly be kind of filtering into Clay County Otter Tail and Becker also, but they did a program on their own of which was, initial seed money was from the Buffalo Red of twenty-five thousand dollars to set up one-year programs. That got the ear of General Mills and other corporates, and right now they have a three-year funding program of one-point-four-five million. That's how much twenty-five thousand dollars leveraged in a three-year program, and, and their employee down there, Kim Melton, she was at the state yesterday, down in St. Paul, excuse me, and she was visiting with other corporates such as PepsiCo and a few others, so the program may even get bigger. And again, I think they're just, just happened to, it was so good that they got this started out, and hopefully, working with the cover crops and soil health throughout the state, integrate that into, you know, intensive agriculture we do, you know, it's just a huge benefit in many facets, but, and showing farmers along the way that they can have a good rate of return and follow those practices that protect our soil and our water. And, let's see, oh, back to the flooding a little bit. We got down, I found this interesting, so I don't know if Justin reported some of these numbers or, or not, but it came from the watershed. So Matt reported that there were nine, nine repairs, you know, with the cleanouts to culverts, and then he had an estimate for each of those repairs. So anyway, long short of it, there was about twenty-six thousand dollars damages in these cleanouts to, to the culverts that are, you know, digging around it. So try to mitigate some of that expense we're talking about, maybe putting on some sort of flags in the fall that would be higher, so maybe they can see them and not collect them. But I found the, you know, the, the number of repairs interesting in all that cleanout activity. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Last week, I attended a discussion with several of our rural cities in Clay County. It was a meeting that was requested after our small cities meeting in regards to county assessments and how the county goes about that process. I think it was an opportunity to educate, certainly I learned a lot through that whole process. I, I think it's important to, if citizens have questions, there's a lot of information available for citizens to look up and, and kind of understand how that process works. Just Googling Clay County Assessor's Office, there's a wide amount of information present. So thank you to Nancy for really helping steer that meeting. That day, I was also, attended the Minnesota Joint Powers Board of the Red River Basin Commission. We had a long presentation from James Guler from Moore Engineering, giving updates on project inner workings, funding plans, and the status of the Red Path Empoundment, which is a project in Traverse County that is moving along. We also had an update from the representatives from the West Central Regional Water District to that board, certainly with Norman and Polk County part of that committee as well. It was important for them to get updates, and there is a lot of support regarding the work. So just builds to the momentum that group is trying to gather in order to get something like that done. We did then have elections to the Red River Basin Commission. The Minnesota Counties Group has two members, part of that with alternates as well. Gary Kiso, who also serves on the executive board from Marshall County, was appointed to that board, and then Ron Staples from Stevens County is his alternate. And then I was appointed to that board with Leon Olson from Kitzin County as well. So I know that this group has had a, a pretty big presence on the basin commission, so I'm excited about that opportunity. And then, that, next day, I did have long conversations with Matt Hilgard from AMC, appreciate that he reached out to us to garner some support in advocating, advocating for the local control need as well as the revenue pieces, thanks to Commissioner Ebinger for his input, particularly with his background, felt it was really necessary to reflect the concerns based on historical issues that Clay County has with current legislation. So I guess we'll see how it all comes together. I also, that day, had long conversations with Shelley Carlson about the letter that was proposed to this board, so thank you again for your support in that. Feel it's really important to continue to advocate for that need. And also Shannon Foel from the chamber, pretty serious concerns based on, on how some legislation was written. I am seeing that as we push towards the end of legislation, legislative session, there's a lot happening, a, a lot that we as counties need to kind of come to grips with how we help implement what the state's laws are now. I also reached out to Steve to say that maybe it's important to have a pick committee meeting and working with Darren to see how some of these laws will affect employers and making sure that we have ample time to discuss policies and procedures going forward with those pieces. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May second, we
On May 2nd, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We've talked about the items that we were, we had this morning for replacing. In addition, we had some conversations regarding the 11th Street Underpass Bridge Project. There continues, continues to be ongoing discussion about ownership of those bridges, who will own them. I think the city of Morden, Clay County, would prefer that BNSF owned both bridges. I think that's what we're pushing for. Their comeback on one of the bridges is that they would like, they would probably be willing to do that, but they want to be removed from the 5% obligation that they have in funding. So, so there could be some, but I mean, these things are still in negotiation and, and that's just on the one bridge. The, the North Bridge, the one that's between First Avenue and Center Avenue, that's, that actually crosses the county road. And so there's some discussion about the potential ownership being shared, a shared ownership. I don't know if that would be between BNSF, the city and the county, or if it would just be city and county. Ultimately, those things are all still being worked out. We talked more about the Drews claim on the County Road One project. And I think that's the extent of that meeting. On May 3rd, we had a building committee meeting. And we had three presentations. Once we move the detox facility from the family service center, there's going to be some vacant space. And we have three inter-agencies that are very interested in that space. And that being Public Health, Social Services, and West Central Regional Juvenile Center. We received presentations from all of them in terms of why they needed the space and how much space they needed. And, and after they left, I think we've, we internally had some, some considerations that should be done before that happens. And I'll let Steve fill in a little bit more there, but I think, I think under some of our current policies available to us, there's ways that they can probably free up some space moving forward. We did, then we had some discussion about, timeline, we, we had some discussion then about the just, you know, this building, there's some potential, the state probation is interested in some space here. And I don't know where that's going to go, but I, we just, we had the start of that conversation in terms of how that would look. On May 4th, we had a, our Clay County Intergovernmental Committee meeting. And we basically did a recap of the intergovernmental retreat that we had in January, because this is the first time we've really met since then. Overall, it was considered a good deal and we, so we're already looking at next year. And really, I think the, a real, that came to the forefront from everybody's point of view still is, is childcare and the needs of childcare and workforce shortage and how those two work together. Even though last year's retreat centered around that in some areas, but we may have to look at some different approaches to that. So that's still being under consideration. As Commissioner Kravonov indicated, I, I attended the Clay County Collaborative Meeting on behalf of the Lakes Country Service Cooperative. And, and there was a, it was my first meeting in that, and I think I was on that a number of years ago, probably going back in the 2008, 2009. But, and it, just to focus on, you know, and there was some discussion regarding the hiring of the coordinator position and the process that that went through and, and the compensation that could be involved there. I won't get into those details, but that's, that's going to be ultimately worked out. In the budget area, you know, they're, you know, as, as Commissioner Kravonov said, they, they came in with a proposal of, of expenditures of $334,000 compared to what were expenditures in 2003 of 209,000. You know, so that, that actually, it amounted to $141,000 increase, which was a 70, almost a 74% increase. One of the things that I did notice in the 2003 budget was that the amount of expenditures they were using was less than the revenues that they received in 2003. And, and I give really, I give credit to Carolyn Sternad for pointing this out because based on that, on that proposed increase in expend, in expenditures, with, with the revenues that would be coming in from the federal and state government, we, they would, they would be basically wiping out their entire reserve fund in two to three years. And, and that, and, and, you know, we just knew that's just not, it's not a good financial plan and it's not sustainable. You know, and so looking at it, and I, you know, and I, you know, I, I said, well, why don't, so now they're at, so in, in 2003, they had, well, I'm going to go to 2004, they were, they were estimating $262,000 in, in revenue. And I said, well, why don't, why don't we protect our reserves and, and you, you can maximize that 262,000. And so if you, if the difference from what they had in 2003 was 209,000, you go, hm?
2020.
Yeah, 2020.
Yeah, 2020.
2023. Oh, did I, did I miss? So anyway, so, so there, there's, by doing that, they could, they could actually up their, they can up their expenditures considerably, but then still be, have a balanced budget and protect their, and so, so I think we left with, with Carolyn and them to redo the budget to meet their revenues. It's kind of like what we do in the county. You, we, we know what our revenues are and we establish the, our expenditures to that. And so, you know, with that amount, they could, they could theoretically increase their expenditures by $69,000 to match their increased revenue and not have an impact on their reserves. And, you know, and I think as we talked that through, I think it was pretty well accepted from, the board felt that was a good, good option. So, and then basically everything, nothing was finalized, everything was tabled so that, that, and then of course, we left it to Carolyn to kind of help determine, okay, of these requests, how do we deal with each one of them? You know, so, and we need to have their expertise in helping us resolve that. So that's, it was an interesting meeting and a long one. Then on the, then yesterday, we had, in the morning, or, yeah, in the morning, we had or, 1:00, I guess. I should start off by saying we had, I, I went with the, we had a meeting at 11:00 yesterday with the folks from the Diversion Authority to talk about the upcoming meeting last night with Holy Cross, and I'll get into that in a minute. Then at, yesterday afternoon, we did have our DMV pre-design meeting for the Building Committee. And we went through an awful lot of things, the layout, parking, and, and they're, I think they're getting a little bit closer in terms of their interior needs that they, they're looking at wanting to have. There's a couple of suggestions and I, kind of doing a little bit of, what do they call that?
Value.
Value engineering beforehand instead of waiting till afterwards. You know, there were a couple of office spaces that were like, pretty big, so. Anyway, so that meeting, that many, meeting went well. And I think the timeline is, they're going to probably be ready with something by the end of June. I think Scott said that we could be seeing something by the end of June. And then last night, we did it, we were out in Comstock for the meeting with Holy Cross Township. You know, and all, their full township board was there as well as a couple of other landowners and myself, Commissioner Ebinger, and Chris Bakigard, and Katie Schmidt, the attorney, and Martin Nicholson, and Cat, their attorney Cash Allen was there. I, it was, it was a really good meeting. I, you know, they, they kept asking, why can't we have them both open? And, and Chris Bakigard talked a little bit about that and, and, you know, and I basically said why the, you know, why the county has stepped in, you know, because we were informed that if, if there gets to be an impasse there, it might come onto the county to, to have to make some of those decisions regarding roads. And rather than us doing that, we would like to see, see it worked out amongst the townships and the Diversion Authority if at all possible. And with that, that's when, you know, we'd stepped in and we found a way to at least get 150th Avenue open. And we did get a verbal commitment from the Corps to do that. And they, then they still kind of insisted on 170th, that they wanted that done. And, and we talked a little, little bit about, you know, the impact, sometimes the impacts of doing one thing can also require potentially more land acquisitions than the, than what the current proposal is. And so, you know, the township may have had one position, but, you know, it really boils down to if they want that open, are the landowners going to want to agree to give up that land to, to do that? And so it was really good that we had a local landowner who was involved with part of that land on 170th was there. And it was, I'm glad, I'm glad, glad he was there. And so, you know, and obviously, the final decision on, on whether that is open or closed or not is going to fall with the Corps. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they could insist that there not be a crossing But where they are in their design, what, what, I think the, what we said is if you can, if you can talk with your landowners and come up with, you know, reasoning and maybe some assurances that the land can be acquired to open 170th without, because the Corps is on a timeline and they don't want delays. As a matter of fact, they wanted, they wanted a final deal on 150th by May 11th. And so, so, and then we basically said, if you can come up with that, you know, we can go back and we can go to bat for you and say, well, we think, you know, that based on these factors, you know, 170th should be considered. Because they have a bit of, there's an extensive bullet point list of why the Corps said no, you know. And so, and I, I think, I think when the meeting was over, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, the township thanked us for being there. And, and I think there was some, there was some sort of feeling that maybe this, well, they all said this is a step in the right direction. They thought it was, they thought it was a beneficial meeting. So, so we'll see, but I, you know, even, ultimately, we can, we can go and we can encourage the Corps based on these factors that this is a, a good solution to a problem. And again, ultimately, it's still going to be the Corps who's going to decide. And, and, you know, I don't know, I think that kind of covers it, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we told them what steps they could take that would facilitate our argument for 170. But again, the timeline is a timeline. And it's, it's running close, so we'll see how it shakes out.
You know, and, you know, it's not, it's not the first time within this project where, where there has been a dispute that has to be settled in court. And, and so we have to always be thinking about what that timeline is from a Diversion Authority standpoint to be able to meet our timeline. And so you kind of back the, that process up. And it says, okay, if we, if the Corps is going to go to bid with these things, for example, in March, we know that there's a time period that needs to be done in the event that there has to be an eminent domain process done, in the event they're, they're unwilling to do it. And there has been, there has, we have done eminent domain on this project in Clay County and it's been done a lot more in Cass County. But that process all needs to, that's why, that's why it's important on this timeline to, you know, to, to do this. And I, you know, I think they realize that. And I, I got the impression from, from a couple of the landowners that were there, they were, you know, they're, they're interested and, and, you know, they, I think what they're, they just want to make sure that they're fairly compensated, I think is really what it boils down to. So, I mean, I, thankfully, we didn't go in there with the arguing, with the idea of this thing shouldn't be happening. I, you know, I think that's, that ship has left and, and they know that the project is being done and how we can best help them. So, that concludes my report.
Okay, my, my meetings were Highway Tracking on May 10th, last Tuesday. The only thing further I can add on that is that the county pit.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the townships want to expand that. I mean, they want to get their gravel from there, and they're unable to get their gravel from there, and they have to pay more for it. Some of the township meetings I've been going to, like the one I was at last night, they have to pay a dollar, keep me footing now, more, just to get their gravel because it's coming from a further place. We can't expand county to pit due to the code of skipper, which brings so much tourism into the Clay County. So we're trying to hold that space open for the butterflies. Yes, okay. Enough on that. Talked about Spring Terry Township and the roads up there. We're going to, Justin and I are going to that meeting tonight, talk to them about that. Assistant Engineer Precision is still open, so we know if anybody that, has someone available, get them to apply. Building Committee, which Kevin, pretty well covered on that. I think the one thing we noticed on that, that detox center is moving out of there, is not going to be available for two years. And some of the needs for the people that requesting that space is almost immediate. I mean, they need it now. And I don't know if their correlation is going to work out or not, you know, so more discussion to come on that. Overview of the assessment procedures on Thursday morning. Nancy did a good job in explaining, answering questions. We had Holly Dilwood saving the bars over there, gave a good explanation on, on how the assessments are handled. And I think everybody got their questions answered. They're probably not satisfied with it, but the questions are got, got answered, you know, I just, appraisals are going up. It's just the way it's been working out. Monday, yes, we had the DMV pre-design. There again, I think things could go better. We still don't know whether the state wants to go in with us. We haven't got an answer from that then yet. I think once we get an answer, then we, we'll know how to design that building. Last night, I went to Cromwell Township. They were very, they were happy with the condition of the roads, so they have some suggestions on them. And from there, I went to Morkin Township and they had a busy meeting there, planning on building a new township building and a lot of discussion, discussion was going on for over an hour. And I, I left before it got done and I don't know if they settled anything or not. They didn't settle anything while I was there, so those were my meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I also participated in Highway Tracking, which is well, been well-covered. The, on the 4th, I participated in the Intergovernmental Retreat Committee. Again, good discussions there, a lot of, in regards to the, to the retreat that we just had, also talked about some of the challenges that, that we may be facing with paid family leave, a union legislation, and also the cannabis. On the 4th, participated in the Alder, or excuse me, the Assessor meeting that's been addressed. Also met with our Alder Treasurer and Sheriff Amptin on some internal service issues and needs within the Sheriff's Department. They're in the process of reviewing, just like Mr. Sorum is, as we kind of have moving targets on the costs of, of machinery. Participated on the 5th at the meeting with TerraCon. They did provide us some information that I will be sending to the commissioners that were not there in regards to, it kind of highlights, highlights the impact, not only that TerraCon has on, on Clay County, but also Minnesota as a whole. Afternoon, we talked to Derek Lapointe on a series, series of economic development issues. On the, on the 8th, we continue with our communication coordination. On the, on the 8th, we continue with our communication coordinator discussions, also participated in the meeting with Mr. Bakigard and Holy Cross, and also the pre-design meetings. Failed to mention, I guess, the Building Committee also participated in that. One, as Commissioner Gross mentioned, part of the challenge that Social Services and Public Health are having immediately are some of those space issues, is they hire additional people, that those needs are now. One of the things that we talked about when we went to the remote work policy, part of, part of that piece was offering the remote work, but from the county's perspective, there is also an opportunity to, to share space for those people that are having that hybrid work week. And so we've asked Kathy and Rhonda to take a look at that, to, because we feel that that's an avenue, that's a possibility, to save, save some, some additional space that will allow to meet their needs, and also some additional drop zones for those staff that, that have to come in on the days that they're not intending to be. So there'll be more, more discussion on that. Just a few things of note, we got an update yesterday. AMC District Meeting is going to be June 16th. That's in our, our board packet, but, but we did receive notification that it's not going to be at Big Wood. It's going to be at the, at the Alderhead Campus, and so we'll make that change in the packet. Just for your awareness, Lieutenant Tweeten has submitted the state preliminary damage assessment based on the flood, the flood issues that we had this year at the Homeland Security and Emergency Management for their assessment on the cost of that for potential reimbursement. This Thursday and Friday, I'll be in, at AMC, down at AMC in St. Paul for their futures meetings. And just last thing, next week, Lori and I will be bringing forward budget discussions, two, a couple of different items. One, the timeline for the 2024 budget, and also we'll be looking at 2022 as a whole, and also year-to-date on revenues and expenses. And that concludes my report.
Ryan, you got some? You okay? All right. Kevin?
Question for Steve. You know, with what's going on at the national level right now, you know, there's some discussion, there could be an impasse regarding the federal budget issues right now, and if there were to be some sort of a, I mean, because, because this could be coming up as early as June, and if, if that were done, what, what would, what financial impacts could, could the county be seeing? We should probably be being prepared for that in the event that it did happen. The federal resources might not be flowing in, and, and of course, a lot of our, a lot of our social services, for example, depend on the federal resources. So I think we need to be, at least be looking at that to see what ramifications that might create for us and how we'll deal with it.
Sounds good.
Your turn.